All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order now. Madam Clerk, when you're ready?
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Proton Taylor.
Ah, here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooton.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Please remove your hats and bow your heads with me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you for the blessing of today and the promise of tomorrow. Please keep your heart and hands over the Lenz family. We had a, or, yeah, we, as a family, as a community of Emerald Isle, had a tremendous fundraiser for Trenton Lenz and his family on Saturday at the Thirsty Surfer. Tens of thousands of dollars were raised. Money can't cure everything but your heart and your love. Will, please keep your hands over Trent and his mother, father, sister, and his entire family, always. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please stand and face our flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number five on the agenda will be public comment. There's a microphone up on the podium. There's a sign-up sheet on the table to the left as you walked in. If you missed that sheet, don't worry. Once everybody that's signed up has spoken, if I missed you or you missed the sign-up sheet, we'll give you an opportunity. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And at the end of the comment, I'll thank you for it, raise my little red flag, or my little American flag there, just out of respect to the other speaker's time. When you're ready, ma'am.
Jimmy Farrington.
Good evening, Jimmy. That thing's touching. Oh, and one, while you're getting that thing working, when you're done speaking, if you just lay it down, we won't mess, there we go.
Okay.
If you'll just lay it down when you're done speaking, that, that thing's kinda funky, so we'll go from there, okay?
All right. Um, I just wanted to come up and thank you all for all you do as our mayor and county commissioner and our interim manager, Randy. I think I saw you at the commissioners' meeting the other night on the video. Just wanted to mention, might as well hit you early, beware to not spend too much on our taxes. Keep it affordable for us to live in Emerald Isle. And I'll pass the word on to the county commissioners as well. We got one of them right here tonight, but I'll pass it on to the other county commissioners because it's very important. Took a long time to get those numbers, and it was very unfortunate. As a sitting commissioner, it took so long to get those numbers for the values. A lot of things we had to run through and a lot of things we had to deal with, but it's very important that we really keep an eye on, making, keeping it affordable for people to live in our county and our town. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Ronnie Watson.
Good evening, Ronnie.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank y'all for letting me speak. I reiterate what Jimmy just said. You know, you know, it concerns me that we have a drone in our town. And I've talked to all the towns in Carterick County, and nobody has a drone except us. I know we don't own the drone, but, you know, I just don't think it's right for somebody to be flying a drone over people's property and taking pictures and everything. I think you consider not doing that, not using it for any reason in Emerald Isle. We're just a small town. I mean, we're not Morehead City. Of course, Morehead City does not have a drone, but we're a small town. Let's keep it that way. The other thing about the taxes, when you do the budget, I hope you look at where you can cut some expenses. I see so many things that could be done in this town and so many things that could be cut in, in our taxes or saving in our budget. But also, there's a lot of business people that would love to volunteer when you're doing the budget, if you need help, at no expense. And I think that's something you consider, too. But I go around and I look at all of the streets that needs to be repaired. And, you know, if we can cut some of the money in our budget, we can use that for repairs on our streets. There's a lot of them that hadn't been, anything been done for 25 years. And I sure would appreciate if y'all would consider that. The other thing, I'm gonna say something that probably nobody thinks about. I mean, you gotta have a permit to do everything in Emerald Isle. A permit to cut a tree. You gotta have a well permit. You gotta have a building permit. You gotta have a plumbing permit. I could go on and on. But one thing, this might upset some people, but you don't have to have a permit to have a garbage dump. And you say, what do I mean by that? All you gotta do is ride around, and you see a lot of abandoned trailers, the roofs caved in. And I could name other places, but I think it's up to you to, to ride around and take a look. I talked to some of the county commissioners last week, and their policy, they, they go out and they see things that are in violation, and they give them a 30-day notice. And I think y'all should consider that, too. Emerald Isle is a beautiful town, clean and green and not extreme. That was a slogan that we had years ago. So please go around, take a look, and see what you, see what you can do to help clean up this place. I do appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
That's it.
All right, did we miss anyone? Yes, sir. For the record, name address and you go three minutes.
Good evening. Chris DePinto, 141 Doe Drive, full-time resident there. First of all, I want to tell the town, thank you very much for everything you do. Recognize a couple of employees. Greg from, from your office there has helped me out tremendously. And then also whoever was responsible for the temporary solution to response time from ambulance service on Coast Guard Road. Hopefully, there's a more permanent solution coming, but that was a huge concern for myself and my family and all the neighbors there. So well done on the temporary. Unfortunately, I do have a little bit of negative to add, and I'll try to make it brief. Just resulted today, I went down to the police station to purchase my LSV tag for my golf cart. To my surprise, the, the cost had gone up triple digits. And, you know, apparently, this was voted on last year. You know, where was I? I have no idea. But I thought it was crazy. I went back and checked my receipts for 23, 24, and it was $50. So it has gone up to $125, and minus 25 if you took a test. Well, I drive an LSV. I have a North Carolina driver's license. I appreciate the sentiment of the $25 discount, but at, at the end of the day, I'm a licensed driver, as is everybody else that needs to operate an LSV. When I took a look at it, I really don't understand why I'm, why I'm spending the same amount of money that an EI permit holder is spending. There's actually a, a financial burden on the town to send a police officer, a payroll police officer to someone's house to do an inspection on a golf cart. You're supplying a license plate for that cart. I understand that's an initial, you know, initial cost. But when I look at it and I started digging in, now I look at it and say, if I want to use the regional accesses, that I have to pay $50 on top of that, when I'm entitled to a free, free pass there for a licensed vehicle registered in the state of North Carolina. So I struggle with that. One of the things I most appreciate about the town is that after one, every one of these board meetings, there's a "we heard you" and a follow-up, simply asking where the funds going, that, you know, I have zero problem paying a nominal fee. It's a beautiful town. The frustrating part is I've paid this fee, normally $50, since 2021. In 2021, it was never enforced. I was the only yo-yo in my neighborhood that actually paid for the thing. Started to see a little bit of enforcement. Actually, I got laughed at in 2021 because I spent my 50 bucks and did things right. But when you go down and you look in my area, and I'm sure others, that, that parking is not being enforced. And if it is being enforced, the consequence is go down and buy the tick, buy the, the pass, and we'll alleviate your fine. Well, that's not a consequence, okay? That's just a bypass. So I'm asking you, one, just, I'd really like to know where the funds are going and potentially raise this issue as well. I know this probably should go to the golf cart committee, but I, I look at it more of a financial component for the town than anything else. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chris. Very well said. If you would, if I could ask for you to follow up with an email, just because I don't have your contact information, and I'm assuming nobody sitting to my left or right does. If you would go to our town's website, there's a link called, that you can email @Elected Officials. That will copy all six of us up here. We'll get your answers for you right away. Thank you, sir. Missed anyone else? All right, thank you.
Does this need to be included?
No, this last print, item 13.
Okay.
Excuse me. All right, on item six, as Chris mentioned, the "we heard you," there should be printed copies of last-minute comments on the table to the left as you came in or right as you go out, following up to, or following up on public comments from last month. If they're not up there or if they're not enough, please let us know. We'll get you one right away. Item number seven will be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Commissioner Sawyer with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Item eight is our proclamations and public announcements. We'll start with public announcements.
Here are your upcoming community events and public service announcements. Starting Sunday, April 13th, paid parking will be in effect through September 15th. Emerald Isle taxpayers, business owners, and select groups are eligible for two free parking passes through the Emerald Isle Police Department. On April 15th, join the police educating the public from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in the town boardroom. Later that day, the Golf Cart Advisory Committee meets from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at the same location. The Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee convenes on April 16th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the community center. Discuss stormwater management strategies at the Stormwater Committee meeting on April 17th from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Conference Room. Give the gift of life at the blood drive from 1:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. at the Emerald Isle Community Center. The Board of Adjustment meets on Monday, April 21st from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Enjoy coffee and conversation with local officers at Coffee with a Cop on April 24th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. in the town boardroom. The next planning board meeting is on April 28th from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Beach driving ends on April 30th. Mark your calendars for the 10th Annual Bike the Banks Event on Saturday, May 3rd. Choose between a 10-mile or 50-mile bicycle ride. On Tuesday, May 6th, the Neighborhood Watch Meeting will be held at 4:00 p.m. in the Town Board Meeting Room. We're excited to announce the launch of the new Emerald Isle mobile app. Whether you're a resident or a visitor, the new app makes it easier than ever to stay connected, informed, and engaged. The next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 13th from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. in the Town of Emerald Isle Boardroom. For more details, visit our official website at emeraldisle-nc.org.
Thank you very much. Our PIO, Mark Cruz, always does a fantastic job keeping the town updated, not just only at the monthly meetings, but through our many digital channels on a very, very daily, very regular daily basis. We're very grateful for Mark. This is one I've been looking up, looking forward to, is the presentation for the Adaptive Surf Project of North Carolina. I believe we have Christine and Will Chadwick here with us tonight.
Hey, guys, I'm Josh.
Hey, Josh.
Hi, Josh.
And again, we're a group that has been having events for the past nine seasons now. And we get people from all kinds of different walks of life to the beach that don't necessarily get there on their own easily, regularly, and hopefully a bunch of them on boards and surfing into the shore. Christine has really been the, the heart behind the group since the very beginning, and Will has been there right beside her. We've got Ms. Lauren and Jen here. We're all veterans, I guess. We've been from the beginning. But Christine has put together a really cool video to kind of surmise everything that we do, so.
There we go. Hey, guys, my name is Christine Chadwick, and I want to say thank you very much for allowing us some time to come up here today and talk about ourselves and who we are. And we're excited to, for the possibility to come and do this in Emerald Isle as well. And thank you for the open arms and positivity that we've seen so far. Real quick, who we are and what we do. Let's see, this is, so, this is a little faster on the presentation, so sorry. Our mission effectively-
You're supposed to spell it as it comes out.
Just skip through that. Our mission is to expand the possibilities for individuals who are living with disabilities through surfing. And the last couple of years, we've also included kayaking as well. We are trying to grow a community and a network of adaptive surfers. I know Lauren and Josh have both expressed throughout the years that it's been nice to have other folks in similar situations so they can talk to each other about how they do things and, and stuff like that. Also, with expanding awareness in our local community of the folks who this can benefit, and then making our beaches accessible for everybody. And then, most importantly, we just like to have fun. That's what surfing and being at the beach is all about, anyway. And, let's see. So a little, I like to let everybody know how this started, so we're not some fly-by-night nonprofit. We all have our hearts in this. This is, you know, to our core. This is, excuse me, my brother and I. And my brother was injured when he was younger, and his injury caused him to be a quadriplegic. And he passed away 15 years ago, so it still, it still hits home. And we started, my brother, my brother Donnie, and then a good friend Jerry, that Will had surfed with and Josh knew very fondly. Jerry and my brother unfortunately had passed away prior to these events, but we do this in honor of them and, of course, everybody here today. We were founded in 2016. We started with two really amazing adaptive surfers right here and about 10 volunteers. So a skeleton crew, but we made it happen. There they are, right there, riding their own waves. Pretty stoked.
I had been a surfer prior to my rec, my friend Jerry that you mentioned had been a really active guy before his rec, and he just sought me out. We did not know each other. He just came to my house and said, you know, you and I are new friends. Really kind of led me along those first few years and drug me to an event down in Wilmington, a larger national surf event. And that's when we met with Christine and Will, and she really wanted to do something local and, you know, try to keep that, that stoke going.
Yeah, so we met Josh. We'd heard about Josh's accident, but I did not know Josh prior to. And then we, there's a, an event in Wrightsville called Life Rolls On. And so we met Josh and Jerry down there and decided that more of us, one way or the other, were showing up down that way, so we should try to do something a little bit more local. So we started with two. And then in 2023, we had our biggest year ever. So we started with two, and in June of 2023, we had over 75 surf participants sign up to surf. It was exponential. So we went from 30 being the most we'd ever had, you know, ever surfed with, to 75. We learned a lot that year. And so this is just some, some photos and just some fun stuff that we've done throughout the years, because I know sometimes adaptive surfing can sound, you know, so confusing. So obviously, visuals are very nice to see how it all, how it all happens. And then this is some of the kayaking. We partnered with Beaufort Paddle, if y'all are familiar with them. They've been phenomenal, you know, just let us use their facility. And so it's been, it's been really great. And since 2016, we hold about three adaptive surfing events a year. We've had over 20 since 2016, four kayaking days, and we even traveled to Oceanside, California last year to compete in the U.S. Adaptive Open, which was amazing, so, to say the least. And these are just some fun facts so you guys can, you know, kind of understand what we've done, is I kind of ran through the numbers, and we've worked with roughly 250 individual adaptive surfers with a total of 595 participants to date. So it's, you know, about half, if, actually, yeah, about half keep coming back time after time after time. We have an average of 30 volunteers per event, an average of 30 volunteer hours per volunteer per year. Requires a lot of hands, and we're thankful for everybody that can come out and help. Some questions that most people ask are who surfs with us, and this is just a list of some of the situations that we've encountered. Spinal cord injuries, mobility issues, amputees, autism, muscular dystrophy, downs, cerebral palsy, former military. We deal with every age group, so this isn't just children. This isn't just adults. It's not just, you know, one, one group or the other. We deal with a little bit of everyone, no matter their situation. Volunteer opportunities, we are open to all volunteers. I do not want anyone to think that if they are not surfers or they're not comfortable in the water, that they cannot help out. We have plenty of opportunities up by the tents, on the beach, throughout the whole day, that anybody can help out to volunteer. And if anyone has any questions, you know, just ask or reach out. So how do we do it? You'll see on these photos, there's some beach matting. We have a trailer and we handle, we, we hold all this gear. So we bring the beach mats to each and every event. We roll everything out. We have amazing volunteers that come to help set everything up. It's not easy. And then we also have adaptive boards that are made with handles and things like that. So whatever the situation is, somebody's got some handles. The people that are out there riding tandem or pulling them out in the water have handles to grab the boards with, et cetera. We also have in our organization a handful of beach wheelchairs that are fully capable of going submerged into the ocean without problems. So we can take these into the water without any issues. And that's kind, that's, and we have tents and stuff like that, but this is really what makes it happen, you know, the people and then the gear. And also, local support. These are just a few of the, the folks that have helped out throughout the years. And obviously, we could not be where we are without the continued support of our communities and all these other nonprofits and groups in our area. So we do have a little video that I kind of want to show you guys, because sometimes it's nice to see how it goes. But this is our Facebook, our Instagram. On the bottom, there is our website. Feel free to go on there and check it out. There's contact information there. And then after the little video, I'll, if anybody has any questions, if that's okay, then-
I have several, so.
Okay. Well, just hang tight. You got about a minute of a video here.
We're good.
So sometimes it's nice to see, you know, sometimes when we talk about it, people don't quite understand it. And so when they see it, it brings a whole, it brings it all to life. So, does any, anyone, questions?
I have a few. Anybody else before I go?
How much do the boards cost?
They're about $2,000 apiece.
Yep.
What about the mat you roll out? How much does that cost, the one that goes from the sand?
It's been a few years since we bought it. We've had, um, gosh, for about six, eight year, gosh, longer, almost 10 years.
The last one was through Sarah James Foundation.
There are, it's like $500 for 50 feet or something like that. I could be, I could be wrong, but it's...
And a wheelchair can roll on those?
Yeah, yeah. And so it makes it easy, not just for the wheelchairs, but we've done it at the Oceana the last few years. And everybody that comes out there to that beach, whether they have mobility issues or not, they're just like, oh my gosh, this is the best thing ever. Because there's no, you're not struggling to get, you know. And it doesn't burn your feet.
Shortly after we started doing the events at Oceana, Dunes Club invested in their own walkout mats, the blue mats, for their...
Yeah, anybody with mobility issues, even somebody who, you know, hard walking, it makes it accessible. And a lot of us, we live in our, we are surrounded by our family and community that help us get around. So these events bring a lot of people in through families as well, and just that community that comes with us. It all works that way.
And they last, obviously, they last a long time. You know, we have, they're not out every day. So they're only out whenever we need them, a few times a year. But, you know, they, they hold up. They're pretty sturdy, so.
Wheelchair is good.
Isn't that, you're using the Mobi Mat?
Um, it's not Mobi Mat. It's called, it's Access, the company's called Access Rec. Similar to Mobi Mat, same, same.
It's the same material.
Similar, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think the new material, the thinner stuff, it's like a thin plastic, yeah, yeah. That's a...
Beach wheelchairs, they're...
They're like...
They're three grand now.
They're about $3,000. I'm sure y'all probably know, you guys buy those too, so.
How could the town help support you and what you're doing?
Awesome question. So, like I said, we've, we've kind of been in Atlantic Beach the last few years. And obviously, there's some stuff going on at the Oceana that's, is a catalyst for some of this. But we've been wanting to come down to Emerald Isle for a while, just to kind of bring it down this way because we've met folks. It's funny, you know, it's only 25 miles or so between AB and EI, but it's like a whole different world, you know, what we do down there. And it's, you know, it's, it's interesting. But really just allowing us to utilize parking for an event and just some space. Because we usually bring everything we need, even down to the first aid gear. We have our own first aid gear, so we're pretty portable. It's just that parking is sometimes an issue. And, and, you know, so that's...
Like at Oceana, we have to use plywood to traverse over some areas. Obviously, carry plywood before and after in the wet sand. If it rains, it's all just...
When it's windy, too.
Takes a lot of manpower. And the mats are useful in other areas. But if you had a spot where parking was closer to access and, you know, just logistics, figuring all that out is probably some of the biggest hurdles.
Your features are favorable because you have ramps that go right down to the beach.
Yes, sir.
It would work really well.
Are you funded?
Solely by donations. We've applied, we've gotten a few grants here and there, but it's strictly just donation based.
And you, I'm assuming you have a board and you have a board that writes those grant apps and those types of things?
Yeah, yep. This is, you're looking at the board.
I'm going to take a grant writing class this fall.
Right.
If anyone wants to volunteer, they're drawing for grant writing.
We're fortunate to have some, some people on staff that are really, really well versed at writing grant applications. I've looked at a couple of them and trying to program a VCR 40 years ago, it can get really, really challenging. What events, if any, do you have planned between now and, let's say, late fall this year?
So tentative dates are, I'll just kind of run through them and then we can figure that out. But it's June 21st. It was, used to be the weekend of Father's Day weekend, but it was also the Big Rock Week. And so...
Are we, now, not to cut you off, are we talking in AB?
No, so we are, we are...
Everywhere.
We're still up in there.
We're up in the air, and that's why, yeah.
We took the DoubleTree today, Lauren and I, and we were trying to propose the idea of using their access, and they said they were just...
I'm terrible about cutting people off. That's how I, June 21st is tentative date?
Yeah. And then, so June 21st, August 16th, and then September 13th, I think, or 14th, whenever that Saturday is.
We'll sometimes try to schedule something in October, just as like a fall, or a September as a fallback. And we've had events in October, too, but that can get a little bit icy.
Gets chilly, depending, yeah.
Got you.
When you say event, the event, like we watched the video there, that's, that's the event?
That's it, yeah. So we, yeah, I just have a bunch of people out on the beach and in the water and just taking everybody surfing. It's, you know, just a really big beach day for everybody, kind of.
Like eight to four.
Yeah, yes. So time wise, it's, we're there setting up at seven, and then typically around two to three, we're wrapped up. I mean, it's, it's, you know, most of the day, but...
Hour and a half, two hours breakdown.
Yeah, yeah.
You're nonprofit. Do you have your 501(c)(3) or not?
We do, yep.
I'm just, I'm...
Ask away. If I don't know, it'll...
All right, so June 21st, August 16th, September 13th, maybe October. These are your wannabe dates and location tentative?
I know we had talked about in one of the, we kind of met with a couple of the folks in, back in February, and we were really kind of looking at the Eastern Access. Just, we went and walked it. And it, like how close the water is to the ramp is ideal because we don't have to walk super far.
As opposed to the Western?
Well, Western...
Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, either or. I just figured that the Western was probably like, it's like y'all's main beach. And so I didn't want to interfere. But either, I mean, I'm gonna let you guys kind of tell me because I don't know. But, yeah, we're, we're, we're not, we're up for any location.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have very limited experience with the chairs, and I know the cost that come along with things like that. I have a very good friend of mine whose son requires that type of chair. And we've had fundraisers similar in the past. And when somebody said, "How much is a chair?", I don't know how much they cost.
Like anything that's just added, it's like medical.
Yeah, yeah. And that, and that's just a, that's just the tip of the iceberg.
And we do, just to let y'all know, we are insured as well. So we do get insurance for the events that covers us.
Do you think you're co-insured for your event post?
So I, no, usually it's just us that's covered. And then we've worked with, like we do with Beaufort Paddle. Beaufort Paddle has their insurance, and we just have one waiver that typically includes our information and then Beaufort Paddle stuff. And then everybody just signs that, that one. But we can work it however it needs to happen.
How many parking spaces would you need for, required to do this?
We have that information.
It varies a lot, event to event. And we've had where we can shuttle, you know, a lot of volunteers are more able to park wherever they can. But if we had, you know, 10 to 20 parking places with possible like van access, that would be ideal. And like our one event that had, you know, twice as many people that we normally were used to, we just, we made it work. I think we were using, we were using Amos Mosquitos as like a secondary parking lot because we were at the Oceana.
And then we had somebody driving a golf cart, taking people back and forth to their vehicles, to the site.
We've definitely kind of like learned as we've gone. The Adaptive Surf Project in South Carolina is another group that was established before us. And they, they definitely covered us for a couple of events and showed us the way, even with everything down to insurance and whatnot. But, yeah, we're still learning what we need. And as the group grows, you know, that information gets, you know, more in depth, I guess.
And we do, we do try to, the last couple of years, we've, during the events, we schedule our participants out. So there's a timeline for everyone to be there. Because not everyone can hang out on the beach all day due to whatever the circumstances are. So, you know, whatever, if there's time, if their time is at 12 noon, they show up roughly 30 minutes or so beforehand in case there's the no-show. And then we get them in, they usually hang out for an hour or two and then leave. So it's a constant kind of rotation of vehicles throughout the day. But probably at least for volunteer base, a solid 20, I would, you know, for volunteers through the, for the day. And then add it on.
And access.
Yeah, yeah.
So we spoke with Matt before he left. And he mentioned the Eastern, and there's just west of that, there's an empty parking lot.
Yes.
And mentioned parking there and shoveling down. Do you think that would be a good idea?
Yes, sir. We're gonna have an event here this year. We're gonna have an event. We're gonna have, I'm, I'm committing, our elected officials, I'm committing our staff, I'm committing personally. And I don't get a lot of things right, but getting an event together and raising a, you know what, ton of money, pretty decent at that, too. We're gonna have a fantastic event here this year. It might not be this month, next month. I'm guessing towards the fall, shoulder of the season, we're gonna have your biggest event ever here this year.
I like it, yeah.
Right now. We'll work out the details. We're gonna make it happen. And I'll, I'll challenge Laura. I need an answer in 30 seconds. Just kidding. When you have a minute, she's the best in the world. She's one of the two best grant application writers I've ever seen. Find out for me what we need to do. If there's some money available, no, not, obviously not guaranteeing. If there's some money available for that event or to help this project, my personal challenge to you, we're gonna have an event on Emerald Isle this year. I'm not sure which access, what it's gonna look like. But I hadn't seen a more worthy cause in a really long time. We're gonna make that happen. And I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I can't wait. I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you. We're pretty excited ourselves.
Really looking forward. I'm pumped. I'm pumped. Thank you all. Is there anything else that the town, staff, board, anybody can do for you guys in the meantime?
I don't think so.
Just spread the word.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is an awesome response. And we're just happy to have like the community grow a little bit and see what else we can absorb, you know?
Yeah.
If you live and breathe fresh air, you know someone that can't physically do everything that everybody else can do. My boy Surf.
Bring him on?
Don't butt. I love to watch him.
Gotcha.
We're gonna make it happen.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
All right, Rudy Rudolph, you got a tough act to follow there, Cap.
We need to pause for 10 minutes. We're about to begin a rotation here.
Those are great balls of fire.
Oh, yeah.
Follow that.
Let's see. One second. So, the presentation up? Okay, very good. Well, board, glad to be here on the 20th anniversary of the Bogonlet Realignment Project. We pumped our last grain of sand on April...
April 22nd? You'd think I would know to do that by now. April 22nd, 2005. So when I say 20 years, it's almost to the day. So I thought it'd be a good idea for us to see where we were, where we are, and sort of where we're going. And so, so Bogonlet, just the summary, it's had this kind of nasty habit of sort of opening up in the, in the middle, migrating towards the point, then would open up in the middle again, and migrate to the point. If you look at the aerial photography record, the only time you ever saw the inlet on the Bear Island inlet side, on the Bear Island side, was 1938. So it definitely has that pattern to it. So just some kind of pictures, aerial photographs from like a real plane, you know, sticking your head out and taking a photo, you know. Yeah, I know, like millennials, Gen Z'ers don't understand that. But anyway, so here's some aerial photos, and you could just take a look, you know, without the sandbags at the point, you could just kind of connect the dots there and see, we would have, could have potentially lost all that private property, infrastructure, et cetera. Looking at it from the other way, ocean towards a Dudley Island. And then the sound, you could easily see, you know, we were in really bad shape here. And that was November 2004. And so here's some ground pictures. The roundhouse is that upper one underneath the roundhouse, probably not the safest thing to do. And that's looking at the four-wheel drive ramp on the bottom right. And again, just, just giving you an idea of that. And sandbags, there was about 750. And by 2005, there, there were about 1,000 there at the point. And just some more kind of photos. Pretty hard to believe that that roundhouse is there, made it and where it is today. And just a diagram, a cross section of the channel, and you could see where it says emergency sandbags. And that's just showing the channel underwater moved about 100 or 200 feet in six months between December 3rd and December 03 and, and June 04. So the town hired coastal planning and engineering in the, in the early 2000s to develop a project that would heal the point but not harm Bear Island. Because obviously, that wouldn't be good for the, for anyone. So the consultants and us went kind of, kind of through this long, you know, process. I'm gonna focus on this, on the kind of exciting geomorphic analysis because that way I could show more, more, more photos. So what we did is kind of set up a virtual transect, a network, and we just looked at the, at the aerial photography over time and tried to figure out where was the inlet throughout time that was in the best spot for, of the point. And we decided that the 1976 alignment was, was gonna be our kind of target. And of course, as I said, we, we didn't want to harm a Bear Island. So we set up transects to get the cross section of, of the island and, and also determine after we moved the inlet that, you know, we weren't doing harm, harmed the Bear Island. Let's see, and this was a basic, a design of the project. Yep, here you go. So basically, it had this kind of weird inverted hourglass shape because we wanted to capture the same volume of water as the old channel. So that way, we didn't have to deal with fish, larvae, and stuff going in and out of inlet. And so the, about a million cubic yards, dump truck holds about 12. So a million cubic yards, about 300,000 cubic yards to form this dike. So that way, the water would not go out the old channel but force itself through the brand-new channel. And about 700,000 cubic yards along four and a half miles of, of beach. And that, and that beach extended basically from the Lands End Clubhouse to a Santa Maria. And here are a couple more aerial photos out of an airplane during, during construction. And again, you get to see, this is looking from the sound or, you know, or Dudley's Island, basically looking that way. So again, you could see the dike, old channel, and us kind of piling through the, a new channel. The dredging company pretty much told us as soon as we started dredging, they could almost feel the water going underneath the, the sound. So that was a good plan to go from inside out. And so this is a cool shot of, in March of 2005. That's the dredge, dredging, cutting the brand-new channel. There it is. And then you could see the, the floating pipe, the subline, as they call it, a booster pump. Because we were pumping the sand pretty far, so we had to, had to give it some more horsepower. And there's, and there's the booster pump. And then you could see the start of the fill. And coincidentally, we were right at Bogonlet Pier on March 3rd, 2005. And so after the airplane drive out to the pier, and that's what it looked like coming down the pike. So some more aerial photos pretty quickly. So again, you could see the dike, old channel, new channel making its way through. Same. And so you could see the actual nourishment volumes there. And you could see that the nourishment component was February 11th to April 2nd of 2005. And we finished the dike, like I said, April 22nd, 2005. So, so what was, so what do we anticipate was gonna happen? And what did happen is an important question. So I love this diagram. I bring it to parties and like, and I talk about it, or board meetings. So basically, this is your, a typical epti delta, or they call it the ocean bar. So that, so the ept current, outgoing current goes like through this main channel. As it loses velocity, it dumps sand to kind of create the, that ocean bar, epti delta. And then you think, well, if the outgoing tide is like going through that channel, then the incoming tide is also going through that channel. Wrong. The incoming tide normally goes through these, what they see on the side there, marginal flood, flood channels. So we had to think about that because when we moved the inlet, where would all these sand bodies go? And so this was the basic, you know, elevator speech explanation. So we would dredge a brand-new channel, the brand-new epti delta would form, and the old epti delta would basically collapse and kind of form a natural point. In retrospect, engineers did say that the healing of the point would, would, would take a couple of years. And we would get about, about 15 years at this project, 15. I think from a PR standpoint, we, we probably could have done a better job at explaining how exactly the like point was gonna heal over the, over those first, a couple of years. And to kind of demonstrate this, this is a bathymetry map on the left. Cold colors are deep water, hot colors are shallow water or, or land. And again, you could see all those features I showed you in that, in that, in that cartoon map. You can see the epti delta, you see a flood channel, right, going right through there, epti delta, ept shield, all the swashbars. And so basically, what was happening was the old epti delta, which you can clearly see here, was coming ashore. And there would be like a swell with, and then the sandbar there, and it would weld, go around the corner. And then, then we get another, another episode of a swell, sandbar weld, and go around the corner. And that took a couple of years to really get going. So where are we now? So, you know, the infamous roundhouse, that's in 2003, up there in upper right. So your faithful interim town planner yesterday got some extra food, some water. And I walked all the way out there. And so if any of you can see the roundhouse in the picture that was, I've taken yesterday, I'll buy a beverage after, after the presentation. But it's right there. So that's a pretty amazing story, 20 years later. So again, sort of where are we now? This is a recent survey taken by, by, by the, by the Corps of Engineers. What's interesting on this is, six months ago or so, the, like the, the main channel out, out there was right along the, at the point. And you would go all the way out here, and everybody knows the Seabully is like off the page. Well, now it looks like, like I said, the very first slide, Bogon has a habit of opening up in the middle and migrating this way. And it looks like, to me, that it's, it can open up the middle. And it's pretty, foreboding, I guess. It's pretty darn skinny there. But anyway, so that's kind of where we stand now. And just a couple more slides. So where are we going in the future? So this is just a diagram of all the channel, oppositions over time, all those like us, so quickly lines. And this is the most recent survey of the Corps of Engineers and what the counties of, surveyors do. And again, you can clearly see that, you know, the old channel is shoaled in and, and you, and you got this new channel. So from like a management perspective, the, like county developed this like kind of concept of a safe box. So once the channel hit that, hit that safe box toward, towards the point, we would start to go through the planning efforts and permitting efforts and move it back to the, the 2005. And then when alignment, it was moving at approximately 50-ish feet per year. So a couple of months ago, I would have said you had whatever, seven to 10 years. But now, if this has really moved that way, you, I mean, it's possibly a decade. So anyway, so I think the engineer, Tom Jarrett, who passed away in, in January, he hit it right on. So he's doing really, really well. And last... And last slide, this was a ground adding ceremony. You may remember back then. So, going left to right is Floyd, Pat McElraft, Brett Dupree with Weeks Marine, young Frank Rush, Jane Preston, Art Schools, I think that's Baba Eisenhower, a point resident, Tom Jarrett, the engineer, Aaron, who also worked with CPE, Buck Fugate, the Beach Commission Chairman, who was really pivotal in that, Anita Russell, and then a young Rudy as well. And with that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Rudy. Excellent presentation. Any questions for Mr. Rudolph?
Yeah, Rudy, I was talking, I got a phone call just yesterday, as a matter of fact, from a couple of charter boat captains and said that they're having a hard time navigating the inlet now that it seems to be closed up. And so, I didn't know, probably going to have to do something on the emergency level. I was talking to you about prior to the meeting, but this, I was at coastal management when that was being reviewed for the camera permit at the time. And this project of its scale and magnitude was like a modeled project and it exceeded expectations. And now, is the permit still active?
No, better now. So, the permit to move it is active. That's part of this 50-year master plan that the county has. So, that safe box is all part of that, you know, permit that it's almost permitted. We just got to, the EIS has done for that, et cetera. Now, in terms of dredging, just maintenance dredging, so for a while in the 2000s, the Corps of Engineers did that 100% on their tab, then they weren't getting any money. And then the towns and the state got, and the Corps worked on this kind of permitting authority and cost-sharing program between the local governments and the state, and they would give the money to the Corps. And so, that was a pass-the-hat thing. Carter County would give money, Onslow County would give money, the town would give money, and we would give it to the Corps. And that went on until a couple of years ago when the Corps got a nice chunk of money to dredge it last time. I think that was two or three years ago. So, now, you would have to go back into all the towns and get the money. But all the permitting and cost-sharing things are in place. It's just putting that together sooner rather than later. So, I think working with the county on that ought to be helpful.
Thanks, Rudy. I know Rudy and I go way back and I remember surfing with him before I found out that he was such a coastal geologist, scientist, all this stuff. I thought he was just another surfer out in the water. And then when I really got to know him working on something like this, I was like, my gosh, this guy's a genius. We're blessed to have you onboard with the town at this time and just, we're grateful.
And the lefts there were unbelievable, Commissioner Brownwell. Yes, agreed.
Thank you, sir. Rudy, thank you so much, sir. We appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, number 18, Chief Matthias, you're up, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, citizens. Here tonight to introduce a new full-time employee with the Emerald Isle Fire Department, Sharla Sineth. She comes to us from Pender Fire and EMS. She is certified firefighter, current advanced EMT. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to her because she did agree to talk before tonight. So, there you go.
Hi, thank you all for being here and having me here. Yes, my name is Sharla. I've been in fire and EMS since 2013. I was looking for a place to get involved in the community and a good friend who works for this fire department said to come, so I did. And so far, I'm really glad I did. So, thank you.
Welcome.
She didn't brag. She is slated to current, in paramedic school and currently slated to graduate in August of this year. So, that will add to our staffing here on Emerald Isle with that fire and EMS. And she does have some background with waters. And so, she has come to the right community, if I must say so. So, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, here's Chief Panzarella. I was looking around for you there. You're up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight to recognize Senior Sergeant Clayton Excuse me, unfortunately, Clayton couldn't be with us tonight, but Clayton began his career at the Emerald Isle Police Department nearly 15 years ago where he's worked his way up through the ranks. And to be able to say that this day in time is very rare. So, that definitely shows his loyalty. However, as you can see him there in the picture, I believe if he was standing before you tonight, he would be looking into an eyes of a truly loyal and humble man. While working his way up through the ranks, he took advantage of various training opportunities outside our yearly mandated 24 hours by the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education Training Standards Commission. By taking advantage of this training opportunity, he worked his way up through the POCAP to the rank of senior sergeant and ultimately led to the reason why we're here tonight. So, tonight, we are recognizing him for obtaining his advanced law enforcement certificate. It is the highest law enforcement certificate you can receive, which is also issued by the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education Training Standards. So, this award is based on a higher education, which Clayton has, along with years of service and hundreds of hours of law enforcement training, which they put into a formula before they issued this. So, please join me in congratulating Senior Sergeant Clayton Pittman on a job well done and receiving his advanced law enforcement certificate.
Thank you, Senior Sergeant Pittman, and thank you, Chief. ADF will be our property tax revaluation update, our inter-town manager, Mr. Randy Martin. When you're ready, sir.
Yes, sir. And first of all, two things. I coached Clayton, so that makes me feel really young. In Little League and all the way up, a great young man and the town's very fortunate to have him on staff along with all the other fine employees that the town has. Now, we go to really fun things, talking about tax, property tax values and things of that nature. You heard a couple of fine public comments with the general public side of some of the concerns that people are obviously thinking about. We felt it was timely and I believe some of you agree that we come back with an update on the tax revaluation impact for Emerald Isle. You heard from the county representatives at the last meeting, the technical side of it and what happened countywide. They have since distributed the information for each municipality on the impact within each municipality collectively. Again, it's still preliminary in the sense that the appeals process is just beginning and that obviously will have impacts as decisions are made on appeals. But whatever the impact, we now know it is significant as was anticipated. I've asked our able finance director to put together a report that she's forwarded to you in advance of the meeting. We wanted to give a public presentation tonight so people locally will have that opportunity to see this quantitatively, the impact. The one thing that we'll try to focus on is the impact that this will have on the upcoming budget preparation process because there will be an evaluation and a reconciliation of the impact of this on the tax rate and what potentially could happen to the tax rate as a result of this significant increase. Of course, the Board of Commissioners will make the final determination of that after you consider recommendations from the staff and the manager. You will make the final determination on what is the property tax rate. But I think it's safe to say the rate will be significantly impacted downward as a result of this, but we'll go through the specifics. The town is required to meet state statutory requirements of publishing a specific revenue-neutral quote-unquote rate that would be necessary to minimize the impact of growth in the tax values on the individual taxpayers. But I do caution everyone, as was stated during the county presentation, that this is an average across properties. There will be properties that actually, and the county pointed this out, I went to their meeting, as was pointed out earlier recently, and it was pointed out that the values in some properties actually go down. This is particularly true in certain segments of the properties that are business-related, where they're on depreciation schedule and things of that nature, and aging properties versus others that see huge increases in the value for various reasons, primarily the sale of adjacent properties or similarly situated properties. I think I've confused everybody enough with those statements. I'll stop. Unless there's a burning question, I'd like to recognize Laura, who will be doing the PowerPoint showings of the collective impact, and her memo is available on the website for information. We won't read it all, but she'll walk us through some of the particulars. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. I'm going to stay right here, I think. I should get the...
Don't be shy.
So, just some big numbers, and I wanted to go ahead and publish what we have so far from the county. So, this table is what we've used in our most recent budget. On the left-hand side, the tax values that we used in our budget. So, this was calculated about this time last year in 2024. So, grand total in our current value, we were at $3.229 billion property value town-wide, and that's your real estate, personal property, public service companies are like the Carter Craven Electric, for example, some of our utility companies. That number comes from the Department of Revenue. And then are all of our motor vehicles that are registered here in town. So, that's what we budgeted for. And then, as you know, we're going through the revale process and these are the figures that the county tax office provided to us. And they are, we might have some updates before we finalize our budget, but that has grown to 5.9 billion grand total. And you'll see that big increase there in our real estate, the figures that they've gone through and measured. On average, that's an 87% increase. That's town-wide. I'm going to look at my notes. There is a little bit difference between oceanfront and non-oceanfront. The non-oceanfront was about 89% increase and our oceanfront was about 83% increase. Personal property, boats, mobile homes, equipment, they're estimating an increase at 17% from what we budgeted. Public service is showing a negative, and that's a little bit of a complicated formula from the state, but I expect that number to go back up when we get ready and we get our results. Those numbers aren't going to come in until September. And then they're anticipating 8% for our motor vehicle values. So, on average, we're looking at about 83%. And we're starting to run through those revenue-neutral numbers to see what our tax rate might be for the upcoming budget. And so, very similar numbers, but our most current valuation, where we're at today, is a little bit higher, $3.277 billion. And our current tax rate for general fund is 16 and a half cents. So, that would give us a levy of $5,407,000. If we did, you know, if these numbers were set right in stone today and we divided that out, what would our tax rate have to be to get that exact levy? We would be at 9 cents, 9.16 cents exactly. The statute allows us to, and they require us to disclose this figure, but they also let us have a growth factor. We've had annual growth in our valuation. Our last valuation was in 2020. And so, growing year over year, there's some improvements and so forth. It's about 1.37% that we add each year. And that in 2020, I think we were at 3.1 billion, now we're at the almost 3.3. So, that factor, if this was our final numbers, we would disclose a revenue-neutral rate of 9.29 cents. So, that would be where we were at. And so, we wanted to bring that. We mentioned it in the budget workshop and we don't necessarily have to adopt that number. Once we compile our budget and present it, we'll come to the board with a recommended tax rate, which will be probably very close to this number. That's our goal, but we'll work through that and determine if there's any adjustments that need to be made.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Mr. Martin or Mrs. Rocher?
If no questions, I do have one final comment.
Yes, sir.
I like to use country boy analysis. I grew up in the country, grew up on a farm. And one way to, I try to relate this to the average person because these formulas are very complicated and we, Laura and I actually had a debate about one aspect of it because I had to remember this, having been out of North Carolina the last decade in other states. Everybody does it a little different, but I had to refresh my memory and she, of course, was right and I had to adjust my thinking. But that said, one way to look at this is this revaluation does not establish anything that ends up in a bill to a citizen. That will come purely from the Board of County Commissioners and each community that's incorporated that has its own board, as Emerald Isle does, will set the tax rate, which this is one of the factors and a function of how you arrive at a tax bill, but it is not the only one. Obviously, Laura just pointed out, the rate is a major component and you fully control that in your annual budget process. The other way to look at it, this valuation process, although it has significant impacts collectively on all the properties, everyone, this is a redistribution of tax burden among property owners, the way I'd like to explain it, based on the cost or the value of that particular piece of property in comparison to all others. So, if you do have a property that currently this year is paying based on a rate of 16 and a half cents and you are one of those that your value either stayed flat or didn't go up very much or even went down, you will pay less in property tax based on this kind of scenario. If you are one of those fortunate ones, I guess I would say, that owns a property and the sales have driven the price of your property or you've made additions or whatever that have improved it to where the value of it is 100% higher, then your tax burden is going to go up, no matter what rate is set. That is just the reality of the way it works. So, it's a redistribution of tax burden among the taxpayers is the end result of this particular process. In North Carolina, as was stated at the last meeting, it's required every four to eight years. Some states do it every year. I've had experience with that. It doesn't really matter. It's just less of an increase if you do it more frequently, but the same variables work in the dynamic. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but thank you for allowing us to make this presentation. And if citizens have further questions, monitor the budgeting process and stay engaged. We'll be publishing all of this information in more finite as the time goes on, as we get more information from the county. And we're going to do our best to try to be as fair as we can and still meet the needs, the financial needs of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, if there are no other questions on that, we will move on and pass item number nine, which will be the consent agenda, and move towards item number 10, some old business, continued discussion of the essentials of municipal government course. I brought this up last month. I wasn't aware until our attorney made me and others aware that my, well, my initial ask was to honor, well, let me back up. My initial request was to find a way to ensure that every elected and re-elected official complete the Essentials of Municipal Government 101 course. I then learned in turn and after the fact that an ethics course was included in that class and also required by state law. I see an agenda item or an item in the packet. I see an agenda item or an item in the packet dated 10/9/14, when an Arthur Schools, Art, and was mayor. Floyd Messler was pro-Tim. Nita Hadreen, Tom Hoover Jr., John Wooton, and Mayor Pat Wright were holding the wheel up here. I think it's important and essential for any elected and reelected official to commit to a two-day course that I got a lot out of. Still don't know everything, learn something new all the time. But from a procedural standpoint, not just the right way to do things, but the right way to do things, the procedurally correct way to do things. Knowledge is key, and knowledge is very important. And as elected officials, following proper procedure is the right way to do things. And I learned after questioning that that there is a course called Essentials of Municipal Government 101 that is, includes ethics training and satisfies state law. Mr. Salado, you and I spoke briefly on it. We've had some email communication. My ask is for the board to discuss, take action on ensuring that further, once we're long gone, I'm long gone, anybody else that decides to run for reelection, doesn't decide to run for reelection, honors their commitment to the people that we take an oath to serve, that we can complete a procedural 101 course. And in this case, the municipals of, or the Essentials of Municipal Government covers the state-required law for ethics training. So I'll open it up to the board for any discussion and/or action. All right. Well, then I'll ask the board for a motion that any future elected or reelected official complete the Essentials of Municipal Government 101 training, which also covers the state law requirement for ethics training to be completed within 12 months of election date or reconsider their position, step down, and let the remaining board fill their position per procedure.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion's carried four to one. Thank you. All right. Old business, committee appointments and possible restructuring. Stuff to cover here. Golf cart advisory committee, there are three.
Mayor, just procedurally, did we vote on the consent agenda?
Per our attorney's advice a few meetings ago when we adopted.
You don't have to.
And they corrected. Yeah, they corrected my mistake for a long time.
I just want to be sure.
For a long time.
We still do have to vote affirmatively on that, though.
Just can't add or subtract things after you've done the agenda.
Okay, I apologize. I was mistaken. I was under the assumption that prior to that, that adopting the agenda covered adopting the consent agenda. So item number nine, consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Commissioner Sanderson with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry five zero. Thank you. All right. Golf cart advisory committee. Three vacancies on the golf cart advisory committee. There are a total of five applicants. An email with applications, cover letters and resumes was sent to the board. Email with current member responses regarding the committee's restructuring was sent to the board. You may also choose to dissolve the golf cart advisory committee if you see that's outlived its purpose. There's three suggested motions. You can appoint three applicants out of the five, dissolve or restructure the committee, or three, table it, talk about it later, what have you. Again, counsel, correct me if I'm wrong when it comes to appointments, appointment on committees. One is subject to a roll call vote. I cannot break a tie, nor do I care to. And if the roll call vote is tied, then we'll continue to have a roll call vote until it's done. Right or wrong?
That's correct, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. All right, it's to the board to discuss. As far as I know, they are still meeting. I think the last one was canceled due to a lack of agenda items. Am I right or wrong on that?
So the last one was canceled because the open positions had not been.
There was not a quorum.
Okay. All right.
They are still regularly meeting, though.
If they have a quorum, they are still regularly meeting yet.
Chief Penderella, the original mission of the golf cart advisory committee meeting, can you remind us what that is?
Yes, ma'am. It was to identify available golf cart parking spaces that we could add throughout the island and to enhance golf cart safety.
Do you feel that mission has been accomplished?
It is my humble opinion, we've done everything we could. In fact, we are, it's safe to say we're out of additional spaces that we can do. And there's only so much we can do safety-wise with golf carts that we're not already doing currently.
Thank you.
So the mission's been accomplished.
Chief, would the committee make recommendations on the golf cart license fees or the permit fees for the golf carts?
We raised those last year.
But, I mean, do they make the recommendation?
They had some input, but it was not an overwhelming support this last time we raised fees.
And would they have any input on like where the parking's going to be designated in the oceanfront parking areas also, or?
That's correct. That's what we did. And we've looked at all those areas along Ocean Drive.
Is there anyone from the golf cart committee here tonight? I was just wondering if they had any input, whether they felt like they were still essential or they felt like they should be dissolved.
That was emailed to y'all. They did do emails.
Yeah, there were individual emails sent to us on that and as well as the bike and pedestrian committee. I believe that, I make a motion that we dissolve the golf cart advisory committee at this point due to the fact that they have done an excellent job of fulfilling the mission that was assigned to them. I think that we have staff between the police department and our public works department who are perfectly capable of identifying any additional spots that could possibly be made available. And the funding would still be there, the $25,000 for those improvements, should they be found. But if I'm not mistaken, those have been exhausted at this point.
Okay, so Commissioner Sanderson, your motion is to dissolve the golf cart advisory committee with due appreciation?
Correct.
All right. Commissioner Sanderson has the motion on the floor to dissolve the golf cart advisory committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you. Item 11B would be the bike and pedestrian committee. There are two open vacancies on the bike and pet committee. Seven applications were received in the window of applications. They were submitted to the board on February 6 and again on April 4, 2025, both years 2025. Revised mission statement was also sent to the board on March 24, 2025. Just like the golf cart advisory committee, there are seven applications. Be a roll call vote. I cannot vote to appoint anyone to the bike and pet. Neither do I want to. And this one's open to the board for discussion as well. Same three suggested motions, by the way. Appoint three applicants, dissolve or restructure or other.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to appoint the first one, Judy Starkey, on the fill one of the vacancies at this time.
All right. Counsel, correct me if I'm wrong. First, if there's any discussion and not to shut down your motion, any discussion regarding the bike and pet committee as far as its worthiness use, anything like that. And then let's go item, or excuse me, seat one, seat two, seat three. That way the roll call vote doesn't get muddled, if that's all right?
I have a question. Is it two or three?
There are two vacancies. Seven applications, two vacancies.
Because the bottom, it says three.
The motion would be to appoint two, not three.
Well, there's two vacancies. The first one, if there are no motions to dissolve the committee or table a discussion, then we would start with seat one, seat two, and go roll call vote. Legal, if you have any interjections, feel free to cut me off or correct me whenever you're ready. So if there's no discussion on restructuring or just dissolving the committee, then Mr. Taylor, you can start with a roll call vote.
I stand by that motion I first made.
I'm with you, Mark. I would just say for, as an entree, I think we might want to step back. We need to get people appointed on here to serve because they've been down a few for a while, and I get that. So, by all means, let's do that. But we might want to step back and think about some of these committees and how we might be able to consolidate things and see if we can find any efficiencies. I've talked to a number of folks since we were considering these applicants and had some great suggestions that people have made about how changes we could make to the committee structures or ways that we can give opportunities for other people to serve. So I think it warrants a further discussion. But I don't want to hold up getting these, you know, the full team suited up so that they can continue the important work that they've been doing.
Thanks, sir. All right. See any other discussion? Happy to hear it. If not, then we can start a roll call vote with, for seat number one. Respectfully, Mr. Taylor, you had cast your first roll call vote for Judith Stark.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody?
How does this work? It's yes for net along.
No, it's a roll call vote. So we get.
You can agree, or you can choose another one.
If I may, so I'll take Mr. Taylor's motion as a nomination. And so you all can go down the line and choose to vote on that nomination. Will require a majority of the board. If there is not a majority, then you move on to the next candidate as nominated.
Okay. Sure, I'll say yes.
All right. So Commissioner Taylor with the motion to nominate Judith Stark. All in favor? Motion's carried. Seat two.
I'd like to nominate Valerie Perry.
All right. Mr. Brownlow with the nomination for Valerie Perry. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, so that one is not carried.
I'd like to nominate Maury Galey.
Commissioner Sanderson nominates Maury Galey. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, that's carried three, two. All right. Okay. All right. Planning board, we received nine applications for two open positions on the planning board. Two seats open. Welcome to discuss.
Mayor Holland, I'd like to request that we table this until next month, please. Just, I've talked to some people who have some additional questions and to make sure that the board is, and I mean board members when I say some people. I think that they have every right to have all of their questions addressed before we make these appointments.
All right. Commissioner Sanderson has made a motion to table the planning board appointments until the next board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you. All right. Dog park committee and funds. Email was sent to the board on April 4 at 11:00 with responses and resignations. The committee is currently inactive. Staff recommends formally dissolving the committee while maintaining the capital project fund until a final location is identified. Committee has raised $14,978. Board has approved a matching contribution of $16,922. $31.9. Funds are held in a dedicated capital fund project and will remain reserved for a dog park once a suitable location is identified. So there's obviously open for discussion. Suggested motion, you can formally dissolve it. Money's not going anywhere. You can instruct the staff to continue researching possible locations for a dog park and report back to a later date. So back to the board for discussion.
As someone who's experienced this from day one, when the dog park committee was established, I was a staff member and have seen it through all the motions. It's my understanding they have not had a formal meeting since my retirement in April of '22. Many options have been explored. None have been suitable for all concerned. And I believe that this time we should dissolve the dog park committee, holding those funds in reserve in the event that a location that is acceptable is brought forward and we proceed at that time. Public input from the committee and the general public has already been sought through the committee's various surveys. So we know what everyone wants. The town has record of that. And if we find any, if we find Santa Claus out there and he or Mrs. Claus can draft something like that, then we'll revisit it at that time.
Back up to the front. The motion one more time, please.
I vote to dissolve the dog park committee and keep the funding in the reserve where it currently sits.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Sanderson with the motion. All in favor?
Can I have a quick question before we do it? Just to understand, they haven't voted any, or haven't been in any. Is anybody even left on that committee? Do we have a roll call of the people that's still there?
I believe there are two still there. Oh, they have? Most have moved away.
So there's no, so before we even dissolve something that's not even there anymore? We'll dissolve it, of course, but there's, but this thing.
It's nonexistent for the most part.
It's gone anyway, so there's nobody there.
And it has been for almost three years.
Yeah. I just want to make that publicly known that there's nothing, we're dissolving something that fell apart on its own to start with.
Correct.
And that we're saving this money. This money's not going to be spent on a sidewalk somewhere.
No, it's held in reserve for a dog park.
Exactly.
Unless this board changes that.
Everybody understands that. So just to be clear on that, I just want to make sure that everybody understood there's nobody left on that committee. All right.
Thanks, sir. All right. Motion's on the floor to dissolve the dog park committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you. All right. Item 12, update on the North Carolina League of Municipalities Help Benefits Insurance Pool Closure. Mr. Martin?
We have shared with the commission already prior to tonight that we've seen a glimmer of hope. Beyond that, we've seen some movement and we've seen some positive results. Without further ado, I would recognize our HR and clerk director to give you some information and for the public, some of the process that we're undertaking to do this. And then we'll be glad to further elaborate. Finance Director and I own the recommendation for you on the next steps. So I'll stop and let Jen. She's done a lot of work on this stuff. Good job.
So, yeah, we're plugging along with it. We are talking to three or four different brokerage firms right now as far as all of our health benefits, which encompasses health insurance, dental vision, short-term disability, long-term disability, and life insurance and EAP. And there is an option right now that we're working towards to basically, there was a brokerage firm that did a turnkey situation from what NCLM was offering us. They are not going through Aetna, which is our current health insurance. There, it's probably going to be Blue Cross Blue Shield. But that's looking like the best option right now. We have like very, very preliminary like numbers right now, but nothing solid as of yet. We're still in the process of giving them all of our data and going through all the questionnaires and et cetera. So hopefully we'll have something in next. I think they said this, by the end of this week, they'll have solid numbers for us.
Is the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, is that for government or public employees?
Yes.
Because I know the, the state used to have that, and then they, they went to Aetna. I didn't know.
Yeah, so, and, um, the NCLM went to Aetna, and, but yeah, we can, basically, that's going to be the option with this turnkey situation. They're not, Aetna's going to be too high pricing-wise and stuff, and the Aetna that we had through NCLM is different than an Aetna that we would get on our own, too, so.
Yeah, and it's, a lot of providers are discontinuing accepting Aetna right now, but the private side.
The coverage, the coverage isn't as good in this area as Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Because the providers are not participating.
Yeah, the really good news about the Blue Cross is they have great coverage in this area in terms of participation from vendors, if you will, doctors and so forth, which is really good for the employees. You don't force people by this change to have to go out and get a new doctor because they're out of network, or some of their previous doctor was. So that's one good thing. Laura can comment on the pricing, because we did get collective pricing that we were, it was characterized to us as worst case, that compares very favorably with our current rates from an overall budget perspective. Want to comment on that, Laura?
Sure, yeah, very exciting, you know, we were kind of expecting a potential budget impact when we first learned the news, and the preliminary numbers look like we're going to either meet budget where we're currently at or, or find a cost savings. So really, fingers crossed, we still have a little bit of homework to do, but, you know, looking good, so that was very positive, so. And, you know, a good, still maintaining that good package for employees, so really kind of have our hopes up right now, so we don't want to spill the beans, of course, but part of the reason that we wanted to bring it today, too, I think, is because we do have to act quickly in order to, to secure the, the contract and then go ahead and start that open enrollment process and all the things that we have to do to get ready before July 1st. So we wanted to bring some of the information tonight and let you know that we're feeling good about the results that we're seeing so far.
And, and there's no diminishment of, of benefits or?
If anything, they would increase, honestly.
Yeah, actually, they're going to offer us options that, we're evaluating those, but if it's like described, it would give some of our employees the opportunity to pick something that maybe fits their situation better than we previously allowed, particularly with dependents.
So menu style type insurance.
Some, some degree of that, they have multiple options, but we're, we're looking at least at, at two options that would be better or as good or better. There, there are some differences in the law and whatever, that's above my understanding, but it gets into the deductibles, there's some mandated provisions of this, but even with that, I think through the budgeting process, the town has been supplementing some of that already, so it should give us flexibility to try to, as close as possible, maintain the value to the employees. The good news, two items, one, the employees are, are healthy and have good experience. We, we, we really ranked very well, very high on the rating, which is usually the, the killer for a small group. We're under a hundred, so that's really tough for groups under a hundred. If you have poor experience through some really bad health situations, it can really damage your rating, and fortunately, we're in better shape on that. The other good news is they indicated this one company, over 200 participants, 200 municipal type localities and other entities that are eligible for this are already signing up with them and, and for quotes, and if that materializes, they're, they're looking at a situation where a group like Blue Cross would look at it as a group and, and similar to the way the league did, which is really beneficial for small units, because then you get averaged across thousands of employees instead of hundreds. And, and that, if that materializes as we anticipate in their final quotes, that should see some additional savings in our rates.
And we should see that by the end of this week, they're saying.
And, and that sets us up for the action that the Finance Director and I have discussed, and I endorse it reluctantly, but because it comes down to me having to make some choices, because timing is of the essence. We have to make an almost immediate commitment to be on the track that Laura described of being able to get this done, and of course, we will be fully transparent and make sure everyone knows, but we're asking for your leap of faith as a board, so I'll defer to Laura to explain that part.
Yeah, normally, if we, if we had all the results today, we would present them and, and then request, make a recommendation, request approval for a, a specific contract. We're really hopeful with the one we have now, we also want to look at those others, and it might be mid, either this week or next week, where we would want to try to go ahead and execute a contract, and so we would either have to come and request a special meeting, or if you're comfortable knowing that we're going to maintain the current offering, you know, the current benefits and staying within budget, we would go ahead and make a recommendation and have the manager go ahead and sign without coming back to again. So the request today was to authorize Randy Martin to go ahead and execute a contract in April instead of waiting until the next meeting, we're having a special meeting.
I make a motion, we authorized interim town manager Randy Martin to execute the insurance agreement with the terms that were just spelled out before us.
Commissioner Sanderson has the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you all.
Randy, I appreciate the work and Jen and Laura, the work y'all have done on, on that project for, for the boys and the town benefits. Much appreciated, thank you.
Highly important, yes.
Yeah, and it was interesting listening to you talk to, I, I never thought I'd hear you say cost savings possibility.
I was afraid we were talking double digits.
It's an oxymoron with, with insurance.
Yeah, and then that dependent care might happen, too. I know a lot of people talk about that, the staff has, over the years that I've been sitting up here, so that'd be a nice option if that actually plays out, so something that I was personally fearing when we heard about this a month ago, that it might actually be turning to be a blessing all the way around, and I didn't see this coming, so, and then lots of doctors in the network, so that's, that's really good. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of good stuff there that I didn't plan on hearing, so thank you.
And looking forward, hopefully, there's plenty of time between now and next year's renewal or whatever for the town to look at all options. We don't want to discourage those who might give us a better proposal from the couple of other brokers that have expressed interest, but if they do or they don't, I think the town would be wise to evaluate this at least on the next year to see, because what you always fear is inflation creep of sorts, but it's insurance creep, they get you the first year and then, then it goes up exorbitantly the second year, so I don't see that on the horizon, but I know it has happened, and, and so we want to protect ourselves from that as much as possible, and that's why the, the trust concept of a group sounds very appealing, to be in that group and protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number, well, did we approve the motion yet? We did approve it, didn't we? Okay. Item 13, sorry, it's getting late. Item 13 would be a public hearing, proposed changes to the Emerald O UDO pertaining to the maintenance agreements for one and two family dwelling developments with over 10,000 square feet of land disturbance. Mr. Rudolph, you're up. Before we open, I'll let you update the group, and then we'll go public hearing.
Sure. Thanks again, mayor. Again, these two ordinance changes are kind of from the top, top down, both were, both were approved by the, or the recommendation to proceed with these, was approved by the town board in December and was reviewed by the planning board in January, and they were talked to before, but basically, the first public hearing pertains to eliminating the, the, the stormwater maintenance agreement for a single and dual family dwellings, and all that information is in the packet. We, you've, you've been briefed on this past two meetings, I believe, and again, and again, this is pro forma here just to open up for, you know, public comment.
And Rudy, to reiterate the purpose of this, it's, it's not doing away with the stormwater requirement on one and two family dwellings.
No, you still need a engineered stormwater requirement to handle two inches per.
It's simply an annual maintenance agreement for an engineer, you pay an engineer to come inspect it every year, and, and usually that's something that the coastal, the state stormwater requirements have in place for 10,000 square foot disturbance with 12% intensity, and so that's a, that's more like commercial development. It's not really for residential, it, it got incorporated to residential, and I think that as long as the, in my opinion, as long as we're having them do the engineering and collecting the stormwater, keeping it on their property, that meets the intent and goal of our stormwater ordinance.
Correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're going to make a motion to?
I can't make a motion.
Well, sorry, you would be presiding.
I make a motion, we go into, open the public hearing.
Mayor, actually, you called this to order.
Yes, sir. Motion to go into public hearings on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in the audience sign up or here to speak? If you did, didn't sign up, no big deal, raise your hand and we'll gladly invite you to the podium.
I do not have any signups.
Missed anyone?
We did, we did receive a letter from a lady that's in the hospital. Is that one applied to this one only, or is it applied to both?
Uh, that's for the stormwater, yeah, so that's printed out for all of you.
It should be at your place.
I got it, yeah, we're, yep.
All right, no one else, then ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing.
Commissioner Sawyer, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we're working to discuss.
Say, over 10,000 feet?
I'm sorry?
Over 10,000 feet? That's commercial, it's like you said. Propose any change?
Over 10,000 square feet of land disturbance. So, last couple of sentences of the summary, the planning board reviewed the recommended changes during their January 27, 25 meeting, and unanimously recommended a slight modification to the code change. Plan board also unanimously approved a statement of consistency for the proposed change. Motion to adopt or not adopt the planning board's proposed change and statement of consistency.
And, and the reason this, this is even before the board denies, because we did have a property owner who, who asked, like, why were they having to, you know, submit something that normally a commercial construction project would be doing on an annual basis? I mean, it's, and that's forever, the whole way, and so.
I'd like to make a motion not to adopt the proposed UDO changes.
All right, Commissioner Sawyer has a motion to not adopt the proposed UDO changes by the planning board, all in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
I need some more hands, y'all. Let me back it up, let's try again. Commissioner Sawyer is making a motion to not adopt the changes proposed by, to the UDO on this particular matter by the planning board. That is a motion to not adopt. All in favor of not adopting?
Not, to not adopt.
Not adopt.
Any opposed to not adopting? Y'all got to vote one way or the other.
I'm not sure if I understand.
I'm a little.
Commissioner Sawyer, Commissioner, top, top, top. Commissioner Sawyer is making a motion to not adopt the changes proposed by the planning board. He is saying, he is making a motion to not adopt the changes recommended by the planning board, so he is saying, no, we are not, I don't want to adopt the changes. Do you agree with Commissioner Sawyer?
Which would have the effect of leaving the rules in place.
Right.
Correct.
Yes, and then if you wish to adopt it, you can make a motion to adopt after this vote, just to clear, if this, depending on the outcome of this one.
All right, so who agrees with Commissioner Sawyer to leave it like it is?
Just keep it the same.
Yes.
Yep, why not? Okay.
No!
Sir, no, I'm sorry, we can't do it that way.
Can we reopen the public comment?
No, sir. Commissioner Sawyer has made a motion to not adopt the proposed changes to the UDO. Who agrees with Commissioner Sawyer? With a show of hand.
Mr. Sawyer will need to vote.
Who opposed?
You got to vote.
That is a vote.
I made the motion.
Who opposes Commissioner Sawyer's recommendation? That motion is carried three to two to not adopt the change. All right. Item 14. Proposed changes to section 7.4 of the UDO. Changes also include amendments to section 10.2 of the UDO. All recommended amendments are a result of the changes in the NC general statutes adopted prior to the conclusion of the general assembly's short session. Mr. Rudolph, you're back up, sir.
Yeah, correct. This is basically to, to, to up our, you know, ordinances with the recommendations from the UNC school of, you know, government. There's literally pages of, of, you know, changes that legal counsel have, you know, gone, gone through, a, a planning board has gone through, and just, and just quickly, they include specific code changes regarding vegetation removal under, of billboards on, on, on North Conne highways, a subdivision of performance guarantees, additional verbiage on freestanding signs, and additional definitions under chapter 10.
All right.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Thank you. Motion to open a public hearing is with Commissioner Sanderson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is open. Anyone sign up, Madam Clerk?
I do not have any signups.
Anyone like to, anyone wish to make a comment? All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Sanderson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion's carried, thank you. Board, it's up to you to discuss and adopt or not adopt the proposed UDO changes pertaining to 2024 legislative actions.
Quick question.
Yep.
Rudy, can you, will you explain one more time, please?
All, all the changes?
Okay. Just that little, what you're talking about there, please?
Which, which one, because it, it really hits on all of them, so I'll just, I'll just go over the main, the main bullet points, and if you have a question about that specific topic, we can, we could dig in. So there was some code changes to include verbiage on vegetation removal under, under, under billboards on North Conne highways, that's in, uh, chapter two of our UDO, a subdivision performance guarantees, which is under chapter seven of our UDO, additional verbiage regarding freestanding signs, which is under, under chapter six of our UDO, additional definitions under, uh, chapter 10, and we can get into that if you want to, and additional verbiage specific to, to stormwater management under chapter six of our UDO. And if you have any questions on any of those groups, just kind of let me know and we can dig into it.
I'm good, okay, thank you. Make sure I'm understanding correctly.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed UDO changes.
All right. Mr. Woody with the motion to adopt the proposed UDO changes on item 14, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you. All right, item 15, we are going into closed session with motion, of course. I will add that prior to asking for the motion to go into closed session, unlike several recent closed sessions, when we come out of closed session, item 16 will be back into open session regarding possible action related, related to item 15. So once we have an approved motion to go into closed session, we'll ask everybody to leave the room, you're welcome to hang out outside, hang out in your cars, hang out You're welcome to hang out outside, hang out in your cars, hang out somewhere out of earshot. Once we come out of closed session, I'll send someone out. If anyone is still wanting to come back in for the open session, we'll invite you back in. So at that point, I will ask for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to, just read that part, and we'll go from there.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NC General Statute 143, 318, 11A6.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson has the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that everyone? I'm sorry.
Yeah, aye.
All right, motion's carried. Thank you all, and we'll send someone out to check for you. At this point, let's take five minutes, come back in at 7:55, and we'll get started. Thank you, sir. All right, welcome back, everyone. We're out of closed session now. Thank you for your patience. Moving on to item number 16, possible action related to item 15, closed session pursuant to NCGS 143, 318, 11A6, to discuss personnel. Floor is yours, board. Can be as simple as a motion.
All right, I'll make, first, I'd like to thank Randy for all your hard work pulling all this information together for us. It's much appreciated. And based on that and our discussion, I would like to make a motion to authorize the employment agreement that was labeled as Option A in our discussion dated 8 April 2025, to appoint Frank Rush as our town manager.
All right. Commissioner Wooton has the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion's carried. Thank you. All right, item 17, comments from the town clerk?
No comments.
Town attorney?
So I had a brief presentation, but in the interest of time, I'll just kind of summarize. I attended the UNC SOG Attorneys Conference, very equivalent to what you guys will future be attending, and it was a fantastic experience, and there was a couple issues, matters I wanted to bring to y'all's attention that were of great debate there, namely regarding AI and social media policies by the town. Now, I consider myself somewhat of a pioneer in the field of AI, albeit my knowledge is limited to how I've used it, but it is an extremely useful tool, and I'd like to emphasize "tool" because there has been issues across all fields with misuse of AI, and we really don't have any go-bys on it. We have a social media policy, which most towns do, but ours is over 15 years old, I believe. So I would recommend that that be brought to y'all's attention, to have that as potential item for review later on, but I would encourage much discussion about the use of AI within our planning and the development of an AI policy for this town to lead the way. So, you know, even if we're slightly wrong on this, no one can really be wrong because it doesn't exist in any other municipalities. So we can lead the way on this, have industry experts reach out to us by showing our interest in pursuing this, and I would be open to any questions in the future on how we can accomplish this, and we'll work tirelessly to do so, should you guys want me to.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
I'd like to welcome Frank Rush back and thank Randy for what he's done for us and continues to do for us. Looking forward to a bright future for Immortal again.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Wooton?
Yeah, I'd like to act like what Mark said, and thank you, staff. We got some bumpy times we've been going through. Y'all are doing a great job, so I appreciate it, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Brownlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to give kudos to our acting town manager, Randy Martin, and his staff. Our town staff is, they are an amazing group of people dedicated to what they're doing, and I'd like to applaud them and make sure that they're taken care of again through this insurance fiasco with the league. I don't know what happened there, but we can pick it up and make sure that they have their benefits due and continue and improve even. That's what a blessing that is. And I'd like to thank the board and give kudos to this board for making a good choice. I feel like Frank is the perfect fit at this time for this position, and we're blessed to have him, so thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Sawyer?
Randy, thank you. Main thing is, it's an insurance. It feels like you guys have got that under control, so thank you for that.
I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Sawyer just said. Thank you for that. It's also been refreshing. I've spent a lot of time on the beach the past few days, and it's refreshing to see the lifeguards back out in full force. They're looking good, looking sharp. I can't extend my thanks enough to this staff. I'll say it again, you make us look good. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. During the break, had a chance to visit the Adaptive Source Project, North Carolina, on Facebook. Like, follow them, and stay tuned for a collaborative effort with them in the fall. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Set moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.